Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if we could please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and the Salute from the Mexico State Department. I pledge allegiance to the state of New Mexico and to the Republic of Peru. While I am here, under my individual, we believe in justice and fairness. As long as we fight the state of New Mexico, we have a circle of different churches who are willing to do what's best for us. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Commissioner Edwerth will not be with us today, and she has other business she needed to attend to. And Commissioner Billings will be here shortly. So with that being said, if we can move on to approval of the work session agenda. Mr. Chairman, will we approve the work session agenda?
A second. Just put the committee. Okay. Second by me. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item is the county reports. If we can have Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner members, this is my report for jail population through June 18, 2019. Actually, the report, the only I'd like to stick to mention is the fact that the increase in our jail population has gone up in about the last month or so. And that's due to the warrants, probation violations. But I think if you'll see in the grass, you'll see what an increase in the jail population right now. That's all I have, sir. You have any questions?
Do we have any questions?
So your high population really is quite high. Is that where we're at now? Has it gone so that the average was 88, but the high is 96, and that's where we're at now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. There's something of a strain on the staff.
Something of a strain on the staff?
We're, like everybody else, we're short-staffed, and so we're trying to fill the vacancies and stuff. We have enough people, it's just they're new people, and we're trying to get them trained up. And so we've had a little bit of overtime that we've had to fill because we're not able to cut them loose yet right now. And so we're looking, we are hiring some individuals who have had prior corrections training, which is really going to help us a whole lot. And, well, you know, we'll put them through the training, but I think it's really going to pay off for us. And that's what we've been looking at, trying to get some experienced people.
Thanks, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We've been working on Roseland pretty hard the last two, three weeks. We've got one reconstruction to pay, and we've got another section ready to start paying over there tomorrow, Thursday on the end. And then I've just got another city that's about spring to rehab it. And then I'm just being all ready. Everybody is, we're probably getting some ransom. Hopefully it's going to help out people that got rid of it. Probably all the property that lost control down in the yard. Kind of hard to do anything when it's still driving out of the middle of the town. It's hard to work the front again. That's all I have.
Mr. President? Just want to tell you this more. Thank you for staying on top of Roland and doing that, explaining his part of what I tried, our county manager also explained too. I appreciate you working this task for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go ahead and add some direct to share that following the general services, all that Rebecca from the airport. We're first thing to figure with you about the current environment.
I just wanted to give you a quick update of what's going on out at the airport. From June 24th to 26th, the FAA came in and did our annual Part 139 inspection. That is to make sure that we're in compliance with commercial service requirements. Happy to report that we had only one deficiency noted, and that was the city fire marshal come out, comes out and does our quarterly inspection on our tank farm. And apparently, we were supposed to be providing them training on how to do our inspection. So we've taken care of it, and all of that's been finished. On July 16th, we had the pre-bid meeting for the terminal renovation, and happy to report people showed up. So we're hoping we'll get some good responses there. Those bids are due on July 25th. I'd like to also share that the American Association of Airport Executives gave us a nice award for Training Excellence. So that was pretty nice. We have many requirements, and we do a lot of our training online with them. And for the last two years, we've completed all of our courses on time and had no deficiencies. And then finally, for Advanced Air, they continue to provide excellent services for the community. They have a 97% on-time performance, and our payments continue to climb. Advance has actually started doing some charter flights for the mine, and they're using our airport. So that's nice little service, and we're getting some extra field purchases from them. Year-to-date, they've purchased a little over 110,000 gallons from us, so we're dealing well on that end. So that's my update. I do have a resolution on later. I don't know if we want to cover that now, or if we want to just wait till it comes up on the...
Cover it, we'll cover it tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions?
The other part of this is, it sounds okay. It sounds spectacular as we might want, but I think cancellations have been zero. Is that right?
They haven't had any cancellations. They had one flight that was canceled.
That's exactly.
Yeah, it's huge. And we're seeing a lot more people coming through consistently in the terminal. They know that the service is good, and that even with bad weather, they're going to get there and they're going to get home.
Yeah. I've been on several full flights, and the ninth seat actually is pretty good.
Yeah, it is. I like that one, too. More legroom.
Yeah. It's good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask you to address your question about County Management.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners. Corey Caminos ended their third, our third quarter with 71,000 rides, which is pretty much even with last fiscal year, so it's a good year. Our grant application for fiscal year 2021 just opened up yesterday, so I will be working on that in the coming month. You'll be seeing a resolution for financial support within the next couple of meetings. It's a requirement of our, of our application. Budgets for 2020, you'll be seeing most likely end of August, beginning of September. I'm working on our, our budget for, for next fiscal year, which starts October 1st. We just had our biennial site visit, which is DOT's version of, of an audit of our operations. Safety, security went really well. I haven't received our, our actual report yet, but it was, it was a really good visit, really productive, so it looks like it's, everything's running really well, smooth. Any questions, or...
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, on top of it, on the fire side, we haven't had any, I know I'm sending you a lot of information based on what the Forest Service sends out, and I'm hoping you're getting that and reading that. So there's several fires burning in the wilderness area of the Gila. None of them are that major or that big, so I'm just giving you that information so that you guys can read up on it in case you start getting questions from the public of, you know, what's going on, or they do put up some smoke indicators and try to keep people abreast of what's going on there. We, as the volunteer fire department, have had several small fires in the month of July so far. Nothing major. We had one in Members, which was a Montoya fire. It was caused, I don't know the exact cause, but it started with a small shed and turned into a wildland fire. But we were able to get on that with help with Upper Members, Lower Members, Santa Rita, and then I had to call in some help from the Forest Service, which were able to 100% contain that with no structural damage besides a small little shed that started at the beginning. We did have a small fire on the 4th of July in Lincoln Hills. PA, a super fire jumped on that as quickly as possible. I really don't know how they're saying fireworks. They don't know if it was or wasn't. So I don't have a full report on that to say that it was or wasn't. So, but they were able to get on that with minor damage, property damage, and put that out. Tyrone had a small fire, which was a lightning strike off of Highway 190, off of Apache Road. I was able to get out there pretty quick and get that stumped out. So it looks like, you know, we're getting into monsoon season now, but with that comes a lot of lightning. I know Commissioner Billings probably sees that a lot, his air beta. So we're, we're ready for that. We had a roof fire chief meeting last night, and so we talked about being prepared and making sure that we're all in proper PPE and moving forward in time to get on these lightning strikes as quickly as we can before it turns. Most of the time, you'll get a lightning strike with a fire, and then the rain will come through and pretty much stomp it out. But if it's not, we're going to be ready for that. So unless you have any other questions, that's all I have for you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Just quickly, the construction continues for the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department addition. Rebecca mentioned the terminal renovations bid opening will be on Thursday. We have a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting for the Tyrone ADA, which is also on Thursday. Hopefully, we'll get a couple of bidders on that. The administration parking lot is, is being designed. We have a contract with Stan Tech for that, for this parking lot out here. And then the ICIP is on the agenda. It is, it's on there. It can be tabled if we get into discussion. I'm just trying to get some dialogue going. Did make some changes to the project list as of even last night, so you have a new updated project list in coordination with the county manager. And the seniors, so that one is due on September 2nd, so we will need to have a resolution completed at least by the second meeting in August. But like I said, I put it on the agenda so we can start talking about it. The senior centers is due September 10th, and we'll be working with HMS to get that complete for both the Members and Gila senior centers. That'll also be a resolution that needs to be approved, but that one's fairly simple. So that's, that's my report. If there's any questions?
I gather the parking lot redesign, is that why the recycling bin is not there? Because I thought we were going to keep getting cardboard here.
Yes, and I spoke with Wayne Sherwood, and he was more than excited to have it moved over to, to your location there at Aldo.
Okay. So we will be over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, through the design, we made some changes in, in the parking design because we were under the impression that it was going away initially, and so we made that, that work. And so we had a discussion with the Southwest Solid Waste, and then, of course, with Wayne Sherwood. So we wanted to keep it as close as possible, but we needed to move it.
And these are the kind of questions I get, more than road questions. When are people going to be able to take their cardboard? Because it's not out there now. Unless I...
The bin was in your parking lot yesterday, and you counted...
As of yesterday, it was in my parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll open my eyes better next time.
Have you seen here's my question again? The top part. For our...
On which part?
The parking lot and the rent.
Pressure is on pressure, so it's based on seeing quotes on that from Southwest Concrete. There was two quotes, one for two spaces, one for four spaces. They were $2,000 difference. So for $16,000, you can go ahead and stretch all these spaces out. And they have asked to move over to the back. We can actually use that as leverage for our CPG grants. Any of that, that we are all working for that. So because those quotes can be reasonable, we are going to put it forward for that.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
I was looking for the ICIP on our July 25th agenda. Is it not on?
It is, and so the 49, or 49 something like that?
1949?
So you should have the resolution and another attachment is the actual project list.
Alright, 1949. Okay. Thank you. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? You may ask. I'm brandy busy.
I have that, I have it on the resume agenda. That would be just...
Okay. So any other county reports? No? Okay. Moving on to the next item of the agenda here is focus on public input. The general purpose, county work session is to inform county board commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting. And for the department agents and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regards to matters in the respective departments. In accordance with Grand County Resolution number R-19-35, involving public input limited to agenda items only and will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone for public input? No one for public input. Okay, moving on to the next item is presentations. Mary Beth?
Hi, Beth, for inviting me. And I'm not here to ask you guys for money. I'm going to say that, of friends. I am with literacy level 1, and part of, the largest part of what we do is we provide one-to-one tutoring for adults. Most of the people who come to work with us are between ages 28 and 45. And in New Mexico, about 20% are New Mexicans, and probably 22% in Grand County, they're working at literacy level 1, and that's about the level of an eight-year-old. So they could look at a memo and figure out the time and place of the meeting, but they wouldn't be able to read and summarize the content. It'll probably take them about an hour with help. So, and I thought I would tell you one story, and try and keep it short, of one of our students. So our model is we, we're in the public library. People come in and sign up to work with us. We help them fill out a really simple two-page application. And I find them a tutor who can meet with them once a week usually. Whatever education level they come in at, that's where we start. And we try to help people get a GED. We also have English, so we have some English students. We do have some programs at the jail. But I, here's the story of one of our learners. She, and this is unfortunately not typical for our adult learners. She had a youth set on as a child. She got pregnant in the eighth grade, had the baby, left school in the eighth grade. A lot of chaos and family problems. She fell into drugs, and she was eventually arrested more than once, ended up at East Pit Prison, the women's prison in Grants, where she got 20 and sober, and God became very important in her life. So when she was released on parole, one of the conditions of her parole was that she had to work toward a GED. And people who leave school in eighth and ninth grade probably were not absorbing a lot of information in one or two years before they left school. You know, they may not have a bed, they may not have food at home, they may be afraid to go home because food might be at the house. So we have to make up a lot of time with these people, and it takes about 100 hours of instruction for someone to move up one grade level. So Connie, and that's, so that's, if you meet once a week and have no cancellations, that's $50. So Connie came in working at about a seventh grade level, so she has to make up seven, eight, nine, 10 levels. So six years of schooling before she could take the GED. And the GED has gotten really hard. There's an algebra section where you have to use a graphic calculator, scientific calculator. Like I have to study to pass the math of GED. So she came back to Silver City, she got her daughter back, she had two part-time jobs, and she got her GED in about two and a half years, which was really quick. And she got promoted, she got a full-time job. She switched her job to days so she can keep an eye on her daughter, who was beginning ninth grade. She said, "I'm going to be home watching her like a hog every night so that she doesn't repeat the mistakes that I made." So that's just one story, and we have many stories. We're 100% grant-funded, and this is a tough year for us. We did not get funding, but Freeport usually gives us a chunk. And the reason I'm here is that we get some funding from the state, and I don't have much control over that process. So community literacy programs like ours got moved under higher education. A lot of adult basic ed is carried out by colleges and universities. Western has a program here. I have a cordial relationship with Debbie Martinano, who's in charge of adult services for Western, but they're semester-based. So you sign up, you go to class for 12 weeks or 16 weeks. If you miss too many classes, you get booted from the program, and a teacher has to cover a certain amount of material. So you have to move at a certain pace. And a lot of our students, they know transportation or childcare, they have help issues. So most of the students that come to us can't succeed in a class-based environment. That's partly why they love schools and get involved. So we're small, we're not intimidating. If they come to the library, most people know where the library is. And they work with the same person. However fast or slow they need to go, we can go at that pace with them. So higher education department keeps coming after our funding. And two weeks ago, it was, we get funding from the New Mexico Coalition for Literacy. They get a chunk of money from the state and parcel it out to about 20 programs throughout New Mexico. They also provide us with software and assessment stuff that we couldn't buy ourselves. It would be way too expensive. So they were, again this year, under threat. Their contract went out as a mistake or illegally. We found out about it, and I did send the commissioners of academic information, and Commissioner Edwards contacted me. We talked to Howie Morales, our board president, who's his high school teacher, and her husband was a baseball coach. So she had to follow with Howie. So we were able, and part of this was the commissioners, too. I know, let me just poke chase on the other commissioners. And we called Stan, and Rebecca Dowd's office got involved. So with that pressure, we were able to back off the people who were coming after the coalition funding. And so we were safe for one more year, for which I really thank you guys. So that's our story, and I think it's, we serve about 200 people per year. And we help the people that have fallen through the cracks, you know, for whatever reason their family failed them, public schools just failed them. And we're trying to give them a chance to improve their education so that their families latch to it. Even for kids to see their parents studying, it's, it's, it gives them a lot. And the student I was talking about before, her daughter came to her graduation, we had a big ceremony for her up in Santa Fe, and her daughter was just beaming, and she's like, you know, "I help my mom study now, she helps me study." And so what we do kind of, there's little waves that get sent out into the community. So, you know, I really appreciate this report that you guys made this this week, and just wanted to get the word out about what we're doing. I do have handouts, I think I'm just going to leave the brochures in my business cards because I think you all deal with an awful lot of paper that I don't want to have to have. But you can also call us, or call the library, they'll transfer it if you know anybody who needs services or who wants to be a tutor for us. All of our tutors are volunteers. The staff is me and a couple of other persons. So we're also always looking for volunteers to help out with tutoring for them. Are there any questions?
Sure. Thank you very much for the presentation, and even more for your work. I really appreciate it. My mom used to be a volunteer with literacy level 1, so I've appreciated it for a long I was on vacation when the funding problem hit email, and I wasn't paying close attention. I wonder if you could explain what was illegal about going out for contract? And let me just say that the email I received from Representative Dow indicated she believed it was routine and required to go out for bid, not illegal.
Okay, and the legal, I had to sort of sit out, I got this information from the executive director of the Coalition in Santa Fe. And I myself am not that familiar with procurement procedures, but my understanding was that if our contract, if the Coalition contract does come up for bid, the holder of that contract has to be notified, and the bid has to be posted publicly on the website. And I think there are a couple of other places where it needs to be openly offered in official capacity. And what happened was emails were sent out, it was, it was part of the scope of work that the Coalition has as its essential job description. So emails were sent out only to adult basic ed programs, certain ones throughout the state. Whether or not that was, and it was, it was all done kind of under the table. The director actually was notified by somebody who signed the email and said, and called her and said, "I didn't think the contract was up for bid." She said, "It's not. In fact, we're negotiating amendments as we speak." So I think there were some unethical, probably illegal, I'm not sure technically, but they didn't go through official channels. They've apologized and taken it all back, but probably as a result of pressure, we were able to, to bring it there.
Okay. So it's a question of timing and process, that presumably if they wait till the contract's up, and if they do the process properly, they are allowed to put it up for bid?
Well, sure.
Yeah.
Sure. And there are certain, you know, certain times when that happens, certain notifications that need to be made, and those were not followed, so I think it would have been improper.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I know.
No, thanks. I think you...
Thank you for the presentation. I think you answered all my questions, very... I do have one question, though. You said mostly you serve adults. Do you serve any children?
We do. We probably have 15 or 20 kids who commit for tutoring. And we also run a book program where we donate new books to elementary school kids in Grand County. That's another arm of our organization. But the Coalition is our also co-founder. Their requirement is that we serve no more than 15% of children because their mission is to serve adults. So we have to cap how much we can do for the kids or risk losing that fund.
Do you have any idea how many monthly follow-through hours are put in?
Uh, yeah. Let's see, over the year, we have about 600 tutoring hours for the jail, and another 475 hours for adults. If we add kids to that, we'd probably see 12 children a month, four hours a week per child. And it's a, you know, it goes up and down, goes up and down. And then with the books, we give, we give about 20,000 books per year. Each child gets anywhere from five to 12 new books. And these are kids whose parents are dealing with basic needs there and might need to buy children's books. So that's also something else that we do for the kids, because reading is a really good predictor of success. You should be reading pretty well by third grade, and if there are books at your house, it's been shown, even if there's just books lying around, kids do better. And when they see parents and someone's reading, of course, they, they get interested in reading. So that, it's a big way to help get children solidly through their education.
Great, thanks. I don't have any questions, just comments I'd like to comment about and all the children for what they do.
Thank you.
Everything that, not everything, but majority of the things we talk about up here, talking about economic development and all that, I believe this program is probably the foundation of it, in getting our adults and kids ready for that piece of the world that's sitting up. So I really, thank you, and all your volunteers, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thanks.
So moving on to...
So moving on to the next item is reviewed to July 25, 2019, regular meeting agenda.
Thank you, Karen Clinders. First item on here is a number of individual reports. Will be the Andorra reporter from the county of Sutter. He's responsible for doing this and the first aid statute of Andorra.
I know we don't want to, there will be a PowerPoint in how we're breaking down what's happening in the whole county. But not including all of this on PowerPoint. And I might have to interject a couple of things on other reports that have to do with this stuff about. Thank you.
Moving on to financial reports. I have any consideration of July 18, 2018, expenditure report. If I have any questions?
Yes, yes. This report period, and the line is, for the total of $2,65,109.43. Of that, from account payable is $1,662,370.86. And consistent on two pay periods, pay period 13 and 14, $422,820.15. So, and these are expenses that we incurred during this period. Our two R.T. fire attendants for $35,700 for bonkers years for the lower mangers' water park department. Crawford Educational Services for $4,900. This is the progress building for the courthouse roof repair. Ascend Aviation for $18,200 for a jet fuel purchase. The Saco Solid Waste Authority for $47,600 for the May 2019 billing for tipping fees. New Mexico State University for $15,970. This is the fourth quarter extension contribution. And Central Office Summit Service $22,500 for the May 2019 inmate meals and medical snacks. Psychopharm construction for $63,300. This is progress mailing for the Whiskey Creek Water Park Department Station 2 Edition. The Chamber of Commerce for $53,300. This is their management fee, the conference center from November 2018 to June 2019. Big R Manufacturing for $81,200. This is the final billing for the two prefabricated seal bridges. This was up for bid. California Insurance $39,500. This is the annual accident policy renewal for the water park departments. Pillar Financial Services $11,900. This is the July 2019 lease payment. Vito for Health Strategies $54,700. This is for June 2019 Medical Management Services at the Detention Center. Another payment to Saco Solid Waste Authority $56,600. This is for the June 2019 billing for the tipping fees. Municipal Emergency Depository Account $93,750. SEBA equipment for the four years water park department. This was procured through Cooperative Marketing. A.C. Architects $44,720. Progress Building for the airport terminal renovations. Ascend Aviation $19,100, another jet fuel purchase. Behind in Houston for $8,100. Progress Building for the parcelment correction project in the Assessor's Office. Stat Tech Consulting Services $10,000. Progress Building for the Bridge Road Rehabilitation Project. Kansas State Bailey $25,500 for a Chevy ambulance for the killer regional EMS.
Any questions, comments?
Explain to me the E M U C O level. And how that's fourth quarters at $15,900 for every quarter?
That's correct.
Can you explain that to me a little bit more?
Yes, so Cooperative Extension Services is a three-part, three-part funding source. They receive the state's funding, which is the only one in the state. They provide Cooperative Extension Services to every county in the state. They receive federal funding, state funding, and county funding. So counties and municipalities, whether to perform services. And it is $15,000 per quarter. It would be to provide extension services for each services over a county.
And the other question is the 2013 Chevy ambulance $10,000. Explain to me a little bit more.
So, um, there is some funding that is through the higher tech tax that goes, higher tech tax that goes to the regional for the operation of EMS services. They do provide EMS services in the Midwest as well as the frontier area. And so it's through that funding that accounts for us. They, they, they're sending us through county state bank. Nonetheless, I'm not sure why it was done that way. I can't provide that explanation. But it's through, they, they receive, there's a, there is a regard for it. There's something that allows a portion of that funding to go to the regional E M U. It's not general funding that's coming to that.
And is it a lease to purchase or is it just a straight lease?
I believe it's a lease to purchase.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Moving on to new business. Item F, consideration of senior range advisory board applicants. There are two positions vacant for two-year terms. There were two applicants. They were Hilton and Gordon. Their information was included in their packets.
And just for the record, I think you just said two positions for two-year terms. But that was revised to two positions for one-year terms, correct? The two positions for two-year terms we filled a month ago, two months ago. That's actually in the written agenda. I'm just stating it in case people aren't seeing the agenda, they're only hearing us.
One-year terms?
They're one-year terms. Yeah. But if you read the next sentence, doesn't it?
Okay, sorry.
No problem. No, just clarifying.
I think I'm a little confused because we have large tax, this one year terms. And we have, no, that's a two-year term. Two-year terms, my apologies. Nonetheless, we have two applicants for two vacant positions.
Right. Not much thinking there.
Um, we'll go on to the largest tax. We have one tourism-related position that's vacant and we did not receive any applicants there.
You know, I had an inquiry from someone who might have applied, who was concerned that the board doesn't have any real authority. My impression has been, attending some of their meetings, that what they decide to do with their budget is pretty much what happens. Is that not correct?
That's correct, to an extent. I discovered recently that they were probably overstepping some of their funding and making action. That should have come to the board on some of their contracts and agreements. So I asked them to please operate more of the advisory board capacity. But throughout the services, they do, for the most part, they're allocated the budget that we provide for the money tax, the board of the class. And they do come up with what is, maybe those are best, awful ways to spend those funds. But those agreements that being fulfilled now, this $20,000 below I have authority to sign, or anything above that will contribute for action. There are things that are being said directly to them, which is not, not in a appropriate way to speak. And they just have the advisory, the advisory.
And since you've been manager, have you overruled them on something they've decided to do? Regardless of whether, you know, it was above or below $20,000, have they ever had something overruled?
I have not ever overruled them. I have made some adjustments to their budgets based on evaluation and meditation on my part about what is the most appropriate way to be, we had some marketing that, you know, maybe you said you spent all your money on magazines and.
Oh, boy, that's right.
Maybe other ways of advertising that we would get, you know, bigger, better returns, bigger income. So I did kind of cover it in the past so that we could utilize those in a more appropriate manner. They did have some conversation with a couple of marketing firms, the Towns from the city. And they now utilize the same contractor that the towns from the city does. So a lot of our marketing efforts are now more aligned so that we can market that county as well as all the downtown and those efforts that end to what we're trying to market as a county. That would be the only thing I've kind of overlooked in this decision. But I have the budget because they were, I was seeing that they were spending money, the state was spending money just because it was there. But we have this, so let's take out another half. But we have a little more, so let's take out another half. And there was no way of getting any feedback as to whether or not we were actually getting a result as a comment as what is going to happen for them. That's what I've done.
Good. Thank you.
We did have one person, I did have one person that was interested. However, she is a very early seaman, her business, so she didn't have a business license. She wasn't fully operational. I'm not sure when to allow her business of the money in the county. But we continue to have agencies, maybe the actual, she will be able to reply.
And the requirement is that the business be in the county, not that the owner reside in the county? Is that correct?
Any more comments or questions? Item A, consideration of deposit advisory board applicants. We have the one pair consumer position open. You had applications from Donway Jr., Douglas Shelley, and Dr. Garrett. I believe you have had a chance to read that. It's been, Mr. Shelley has agreed, but if there's another applicant, I think somebody would like to step down. It's more time than we really possibly are able to devote at this time, so.
He's got a dance card.
Item I, appointment at Healy Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. I'll turn that discussion over to you, how you wish to proceed on your discussion.
Well, one question that I had or a suggestion that totally arrived from under the talk was that maybe we could rank our top seven, give those a grand bid so we could have those available. That way we could see, you know, which, where each of our choices stood in case, you know, we thought that it was possible or needed to make some kind of adjustments in our own.
And I think that's an excellent idea. It's tight timeline because we, presumably, I personally would like to have those rankings back, you know, Wednesday by 5:00, rather than right before the meeting. So we would need to get them to her, I guess, expect by the close of business today so she can get back to us by close of business tomorrow. I mean, it's not a complicated task, five lists of seven people. But I agree with Commissioner Salas that that would be very useful to me in figuring out how to proceed on Thursday.
Would that be okay with Bernie?
You know, my only question or concern would be is, do we have any communication with Commissioner Edwards? And will she, you know, I don't know what she's doing. I don't really want to leave her out. And she may not be able to get that information in by, what have we said, by the end of close?
By the close of business today?
By the close of business today. And we may have to make an exception to allow her to be able to participate.
I think if, you're right. I think if we said by Wednesday at 9:00, there'd be no issue at all. She and I spoke last night. She's in Zuni. And she's so very sorry she couldn't be here today. She and I both planned events before we adopted the twice-a-month schedule. Hopefully this is the last of the events that coincides now with a new work session date. I think that at least overnight, she would have no problem sending her list in. I think you're, you're right that maybe during the day it would be difficult. So would that still work if you had it by 9:00 o'clock tomorrow?
And we get the information by the end of?
By the end of tomorrow?
By the end of tomorrow, will we close the business, will it time, so we have time to look at that?
We're wondering if you guys can be, if you guys will be there?
To get me by, do we get the information by 4:00 o'clock Wednesday?
I mean, for me, there's zero difference between 4:00 and 5:00 because I'm not going to look at it till 5:00.
So I'm going with that, 12:00?
Yeah, yeah. Can you do that, Bernie?
We have a question to 5:00.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Thank you for your help with this.
Any other discussion or comments? So what I'm standing is we will rank the top seven, 1 through 7, with number one being your top choice. Should be submitted to Bernie by Wednesday 9:00 a.m. And we should have all the rankings came out by 5:00 P.M. We're all good on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Okay, thank you.
Next, item J, consideration of inventory deletions and transfers.
Senior Hattif, you have a shortlist of inventory deletions and transfers. The deletions that are requested are from the road department for the 1982 International Dumb Truck. And that is no longer a used by the road department. Probably is scheduled to have that sent to you for auction. The next is the sheriff from the sheriff's department, the 2010 Dodge Charger. This is also no longer used, my understanding, the repairs exceed the value of it. So this is no longer a used to be sheriff's office. And that will also be sent to, to be auctioned off. As far as transfers go, there's a 1985 Ford Escort that will be transferred from the sheriff's office to the airport. The sheriff's office no longer needs this Ford Escort. And my understanding, regardless of what we took of this vehicle as part of her lead.
Item K, consideration of a letter of support for letters to the Klyons. I believe Commissioner Edwards placed the county agenda and that is the extent of my knowledge. Do you still need a letter?
Well, Christine and I talked about that. Christine and I talked about that. And I could draft a letter, I think at this time, we don't need one because the imminent threat has been pushed back. But maybe at a later date, I could submit a letter for you guys. Because that could help us in the future. If that's okay.
That will be, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll take that off the agenda.
Oh, tables. There's some recent information that we learned from AG's office that we're not going to, willing to take that action on Thursday. I'm not going to adjust the agenda between them.
Oh, interesting. Even though it's more than 36 hours?
Well, there is a difference of opinion on how things are interpreted. And Kevin and Bernie recently attended AG's office training on IFRS and what it means. He has specifically asked questions about our policies and procedures. And they provided some guidance that I think we need to adhere to. Next section, agreements. Item L, consideration of amendment number one to agreement eight, 1912, professional services agreement via between the county grant and 7505, formerly known as Group and Associates. This is an agreement between the county and 7505 for lodgers' tax activities that I just described that does our marketing, marketing activities. And this is increasing their agreement in the amount of $15,000 for them to oversee the cooperative marketing grant that we received from the tourism department. So it fits into their scope of work. However, because we're still learning about how our relationship works with 7505, they are willing to be able to administer that grant and those funds in addition. It wasn't included into the amount of their original grant agreement. So it's just increasing it by $15,000 so that they can administer that grant rather than the lodger's tax for doing that work.
And do they distinguish in their activities between what's funded by county lodger's tax and what's funded by city lodger's tax?
Yes, that's why we have two separate agreements. We made that separation so that those funds are no longer being commingled or performing our work from our lodger's. that those funds are no longer being commingled, um, or performing our work from our lodger's tax, um, and not, um, mixing it together how it was done in the past.
Okay.
Any other questions? Resolutions, I have M, consideration of resolution R nineteen forty-eight, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for airport aid to the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division, obligation of sponsor matching funds, and authorization to accept the resulting grant offers on the execution of contract documents for the loaning project, taxiway A, um, rehabilitation design at the Grant County Silver City Airport. Uh, the matching funds for this was twenty-five hundred dollars. Bernard, is there any ready to explain what this project entails?
Uh, recently, we have our national meeting, we have a, for cap and grant, um, projects. We had state's construction over the next three years for, uh, apron project, another apron project, and then we were going to do the taxiway. They've requested that we combine these projects, they think that we'll probably get a better response and a better overall project cost by doing it that way. So this request is to, um, New Mexico Aviation Division for help in planning the design of the taxiway. We already had our grants in place, and we were already doing design on the aprons, but since this one was supposed to be three years out, we've moved it up, so that, um, state aviation is stepping forward to help us with this planning project.
So this is, the funding amount is just twenty-five hundred dollars?
That will be our portion, correct?
And what's our portion later?
Until we get the bid doc, or, um, bids back on them, we don't know for sure. The overall project cost for all of them combined is looking at a little over two million for the feds, and our portion is probably going to be somewhere around fifty thousand total for all three. But again, without having bids in, I don't know.
Definitely choose, like, the last time, the way it works, is we have to have actual bid documents in before that the AG steps in, because they want to make sure that you have done our parts and not just send them and estimate the number for them to fund. So it, it works in conjunction, that's a tricky place we're going to do. We have state monies, federal monies, our monies, um, and it's the opportunity to have a two million dollar project completed, um, for approximately fifty-two, fifty-five thousand dollars of accounting.
Can you hold on a minute?
Thank you.
And then, consideration of resolution R nineteen forty-nine, a resolution adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County.
Uh, I guess, uh, spoke earlier, um, this is the resolution adopting the capital, uh, infrastructure capital improvement plan. You have, uh, the projects, uh, list in front of you. Um, what we're looking at is, uh, the top five, um, top three are typically the ones that if there's money in Santa Fe, um, that gets funded, um, when, uh, the legislature looks at these. Uh, so the, the number one, um, is the Grant County Road Department equipment, uh, that I've got on the list. Number two is baton memorial park ADA compliance, uh, with number three being the county vehicle replacement. Uh, number four is general road projects, and number five, the Grant County Judicial Complex. Um, again, this is opening up for dialogue, if there's some changes that we want to make, um, I'm happy to do that, uh, we can table the resolution, uh, until this, uh, infrastructure capital improvement plan has the, um, projects on it that, um, the board agrees with and in the order that the board agrees with.
Good. Uh, the judicial complex is the phase two of, uh, what we did at the conference center?
That is correct. Um, that, uh, the phase two, uh, we've got the funding for, um, uh, on what to, you know, what needs to be done, um, for the, so that'll be the testing portion of what was identified in the old jail. We also have some funding through NMED and the EPA that is going to be utilized for doing some rendering, uh, Moises, uh, with U N M is already working on that. Uh, but this is, this is some numbers that were put together, that they're rough, they are not, um, you know, not, not very solid numbers, but I did have it pretty high, because it seemed like it was a, a pretty, um, a sought-after, uh, project, uh, based on that vision.
So, uh, acknowledging that these are rough estimates, the three hundred and sixty-five thousand shown for fiscal twenty-one?
That is...
That's just looking at what contaminants are present?
That would be, um, design, helping with any other environmental, um, needs that may arise, um, and, uh, yeah, so it's architectural type of design, um, with the estimated cost, again, rough estimate of, you know, over three million dollars, I would say about ten percent for architecture.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add to that conversation, as I have been approached by AOC to, um, be in dialogue around magistrate courts. Um, I actually have a meeting with, um, more of the process of these combos, who's the facilities director for AOC, um, around that conversation on Monday.
So let me ask you a question, and, and I'm not, just for my information, but judicial complex, I mean, that's an important piece in being Grant County, because of, you know, district judges and magistrate judges, but, you know, our magistrate judges and their state, basically state employees, uh, even though they are elected, what does a state do to help us to be able to provide this other than rent?
For magistrate?
For magistrate.
So, um, what, um, AOC has done with other counties, and I was involved in this process before I left, um, Rhode Island County, is there's some negotiations on lease agreements, um, and I'll just speak from my experience as to what I was doing there, um, and that they constructed a magistrate court facility, um, they, because we are not mandated by statute as we are for district attorneys, um, district judges, they actually pay rent, they pay rent, um, the contract I negotiated there, um, they also, um, paid a portion of maintenance of the building, as well as janitorial, um, and that, um, payment that, um, that AOC actually, um, covered the debt service to, um, construct the building. So the revenue from AOC actually made the debt service for the loan to construct the building, um, and I believe that's how other counties have entered into similar revenues, um, with AOC. Um, they're trying to, um, develop relationships with counties, um, and have those monies going to local government rather than out of states, um, folks like, you know, companies here, um, for the lease of those buildings. And they're also seeing that counties are more reactive to, um, provide assistance, um, as far as maintenance, um, I know there's some issues with this building here around security, um, you know, their H-back system not being operational at times, um, and, but first and foremost, their concern is around security and the lack of understanding of, you know, um, people who are not involved, um, with the judicial system or a government understanding the complexity of the security and, um, how critical that is to have. So...
Okay. Well, I was going to say, in the public meeting that discussed this, uh, this issue, uh, the idea that, uh, this project would generate revenues for many decades, probably around several decades anyway, uh, was an attractive part of the proposal.
Right, and the reason I brought that, because I understand district attorney, district judges want it, I just wanted an explanation out for the public, why, that, that they understand that, you know, there's certain teams of district attorneys and district judges that, you know, are mandated by law, but the judicial, I just wanted that explanation out there, because, you know, what I'm having a little hard time swallowing with, with this, um, I see the, I see the plan is, you know, we continually, and I, and I certainly understand, well, we continually have county vehicle replacement on here, that probably going to continue to be, I meant, because of the vehicles, I mean, vehicles, you know, sheriff's department, I think, Kevin knows how much, how much money does he put on his vehicle, and I'm sort of getting tired of seeing that, and I, I'm trying to see if, if maybe there's a way with the sheriff's department, other departments within the county, if they come up with some plan to come up with maybe a lease program or something that's going to save money, that, we don't see this on here, I understand, Grant County Road Department, I, I see some of their equipment, you know, definitely baton and memorial park, I'm just giving you what, what I feel is, that's, you know, something that, that I'm really, that my heart's real into. Um, but, you know, when we look at the Grant County judicial complex being down, you know, and, and county vehicle replacements up there, um, is there any way we can think of something else, come up with another plan, a leasing program, anything to get this, because in thirty years, if I'm around, I'd probably sit in a meeting and see that still out there. I mean, these cars are going to be, have to be replaced every year, we, we need something else, we say it's county vehicle replacement on period number three. It's, I mean, looking at this, there's a lot of other things that, that I'd rather see in that place than vehicle replacement for a county.
Mr. Chairman, that is the reason we have this, I have on the agenda is for you to have this dialogue, because we've not received any feedback from the board as to why your wishes are, and so, um, this is your decision to make, um, we've, we've met with all of the department head elected officials, these are projects being submitted, um, it is entirely your decision how you choose to rank these, all that I would remind you is, um, anything for capital outlay, that is, usually typically is in your top three, and your top five can be submitted for capital outlay, so I would just encourage you to keep that in mind. If those are the things that you as a board don't want to see in the top five, then this is your time to rank those and put them in the order that you, um, you so choose. So that's why it's in front of you, it's for you to rate that.
And then, that's why I'm, I'm just talking about this, and when I look at the judicial complex, I mean, I think it shows enough spaces because of what we're, we're looking for as far as outdoor economic development, you know, economic development, tech, you know, I see all these other things that, that probably should be, um, a little higher than, than county vehicle replacement, you know, I, I see down here, Grant County sister truck purchase, I mean, I think some of these things, uh, you know, hardware should be up there. Uh, I, I see some of these things in here that, that we should hopefully be able to handle by coming up with a plan, especially when it, it comes, it comes to, when it comes to vehicles. So, and that, that's just my two cents, uh, that's, you brought up for discussion, that's my discussion.
And we have, um, the sheriff's department has, um, developed a vehicle replacement plan with their fleet, um, and has been in discussions with Sound, the road department, and Sound has, um, assessed the entire fleet and, um, has identified, um, our replacement needs over, are over the next three to five years. Um, we've not had a discussion regarding, um, lease program, that's something we can look at.
And can we still leave your report, so, I mean, I, I was just going to go out there, now tired of seeing county vehicle replacement on our infrastructure capital improvement plan. So can we simply kind of report as far as what we're doing, what we're looking at, is it feasible?
Do you mean for vehicles?
For vehicles, I mean, car and...
Well, what I was going to suggest, yeah, I mean, when you see two hundred and fifty thousand every year just across the board, I think, I guess as a budgeter, I recognize that's just some investment, right? Of how long it's, these vehicles are going to last. Uh, for the most immediate year, perhaps, a list of, of which vehicles are going to need replacing would help us understand whether this is a real number or not.
As soon as that was completely finalized, he was looking at its intention center fleet, and, um, I asked them to, um, it was a little vague, I asked for a few more details on that, and what's completed is our intention, um, to send that to the board.
Because this is last year, we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I believe, so we, well, I think we chose to replace three of the sheriff's department vehicles, the sheriff's department vehicles want to go last a year, with, with the county that they have to cover, um, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this week they purchased that vehicle. So, you know, and, and that's why looking at this list, I mean, I see things here that, you know, to me, probably need to be moved up, and, and that's one of the questions.
There's, I actually wanted to finish on the judicial complex, I had some specific questions, but then I would like to return to that, if that's okay with you.
That's fine, yeah.
The, the last, the specific question I had on the judicial complex is, uh, if the decision is to demolish existing building, and again, that seems to be the prevailing view at that meeting, uh, would we still be looking at three hundred and sixty-five thousand in architectural-related costs?
I have no idea, honestly. Um, the, the cost estimate is just, you know, talking to Moises and trying to get an idea of what it might cost to, to build a, a two-story building, um, but we are far from having some really good numbers on that. That's why I actually put it at the, at the fifth level, um, it probably should be even lower, even though it's a, it is an item that we like, um, but Santa Fe, if they do fund it, they're going to want some hard numbers, and we're not at that level yet, to, to put it at...
And we're unlikely to be there by January.
We are very unlikely to be there.
I think that'll probably drop in my, in my preference. Uh, coming, coming back to your idea, there's a, there's a strategic aspect of this, uh, that's a little annoying, you know, of the fact that they might fund the top three, even if they're small projects, and not fund more than that, uh, constrains us somewhat. Uh, and there's no sign that that's going to change, that instead of the top three, they'll actually go by the top however many use up the funding? Is, is, that's a question. Uh, because to me, the logical way for them to do it would be to say, if you present us ten projects of twenty-five thousand each, we're only going to count that as two hundred and fifty thousand, not as ten individual projects. And it, when they don't do that, and it's my understanding that they don't do that, they force us to put large projects in the top three to maximize the funding that comes to Grant County from Santa Fe. Look, I'm seeing smiles and nods, there, there's no sense that, that some rational approach is going to win out over the top three idea?
I don't believe so, I mean, that's the, that's the rules that are currently in place, until maybe this governor chooses to overhaul the capital outlay process, like every governor does every time they take office, um, if it's changed, um, typically, um, each new administration. I mean, I'm hearing some rumblings that it, you know, the process may change again, but I just know that if you want capital outlay funding, it must be a top three project, or we will not see funding for that. Um, so that, that's the other strategic piece to this, and also remember that this is also a plan for us to utilize. We utilize this for other funding opportunities, such as, um, Colonia, C D G, USDA, um, uh, the funding sources that are DUCA utilizes, there are many other funding sources that want to see that we have, um, these things identified as, um, a capital improvement that we are seeking funding for, so it's not, it, it serves many, many different purposes, but just keep in mind that whatever you wish to ask the legislature for must be in your top three.
Would it be difficult to add a column to let us know, to let us know what the purpose of the listing is? So if you already know you don't need legislative money for something, uh, and in fact, it's on this list because it will help us qualify for C D B G funding or, or something else, you could put it on, now the C D B G ones look obvious, because I think they're part of the title, but you mentioned the other ones that aren't obvious.
So this is just the summary page of this plan, there are other pages that go along with that, so for each project, you're, correctly, by the things that change, you have to identify what your funding sources are, so for example, obviously, um, you know, the C D B G project is going to say that the funding sources are C D B G and local funds, because you're going after C D B G monies, and we have to have a local map. So in the detail portion of the plan that identifies, we can send you the whole plan, this is simply just the summary of the projects, um, so that you guys could prioritize so that we can get this, um, wrapped up and submitted. But we can send you the detail, I mean, that, that's in the detail.
Are you saying no, you couldn't add a column, I'd have to...
Well, and we would have to, we would have to, this is, we, this is the plan, this is the, the, um, this is submitted to us by the state, we can't change this, we can put this into an Excel document for you, but we can't modify, we can't add a column to this particular, the way this is printed. We could export it into Excel and add that column, but we could send you the detail that identifies what the funding, potential funding sources are for each of these projects.
Right. Well, I, I have a couple of questions on that. I'll take the detail. Go ahead. Follow your blood.
Uh, what criteria do you use for the money aspect? Uh, because this last time, and this is just an education for me, I saw like, uh, the university asked for a lot of money. Okay, so, let's take the time, what criteria do we use for the initial two hundred and fifty?
So on, on the time, uh, at, Commissioner Salas, we have some cost estimates from the engineers. the engineers, um, and the construction cost estimates are in that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar range just for the construction, but we don't have, uh, the, the funding to be able to pay, um, the engineers for their design fees. Um, so the two hundred fifty thousand is just what I've looked at from other projects that they've done that are kind of equivalent, um, in the cost for construction. And that portion, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars is the portion that we're gonna have to come up with if we get the CDBG. The CDBG's max with seven hundred fifty thousand, um, that we're going for. So we're gonna have to come up with that, that portion up to approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the designs. And so that's why that's in here as the number one, um, number one here because that is something that if we decided to leave it in the top three, we could potentially get some funding from Santa Fe.
Well, my question would be is, you know, what have we left off? You know, a million dollars on it because I did see, you know, uh, other projects with, there were a million plus. So I was just wondering, sort of like the twenty-five thousand dollar question, if you ask for two twenty-five thousand dollar items, you get those and you're done, you know? Uh, but the university asked for, right, one point two, one point four for rocks and they got it.
They got one point two?
Didn't they get the money? No, they got it.
They got one point two because part of that's going to Rich Hall that Aldo's gonna occupy.
That's right. So I, I figured out just a little bit about what the mindset is about, um, so if you looked at projects that were submitted across the state this last year, it has a lot to do with what the policies and the state and what kind of money is there, is what you ask for. So it's a matter of knowing what's going on at the state level, watching what's happening in legislative finance about what kind of surplus they're looking at, what kind of money is they thinking they're gonna have for capital outlay plays a big part into what you ask for. In years that you ask for, when there is no money, um, it's, if you submitted a large project, then you're, there's no chance of getting that. Or what has happened and why the capital outlay system is in such a mess right now is what has happened in the past, in years past, is they're partially funded. The legislature will give partial funding and so we have millions of dollars of capital outlay that are sitting out there underutilized because counties don't have, municipalities don't have the money to finish those projects. So it's a matter of knowing that there's a lot of money and then yes, you could put a million dollar project out there and possibly get funded, but you have to have an idea of, of what kind of monies that your legislatures are going to have to be able to spread across their, um, different, their district that they represent. So a lot of that, um, there's some creative thinking about what's going on at a state level and of what is a realistic project to put in there that you think you could get funding for. So as he explained, we know we're gonna need, um, some planning and design funding for Baton, so that made sense to add that there, to go and ask for that particular piece of money to go along with that. Um, nothing, even if we aren't successful at CDBG, we have that first phase started and we can continue looking for other monies. Or like you said, you could ask for a whole million if you so chose, um, and we would answer the questions. So then we have documents that we have to prepare afterwards that says, can you phase this project? That would be an example of one that we could definitely say, yes, we can phase. Phase one is planning and design, we need X amount of dollars, the two hundred and fifty. We need seven hundred and fifty for construction. So there's a lot of other pieces that go to this with the capital outlay, but that kind of plays a lot into why there were so many large projects this last session because there was a lot of money.
Well, to understand is that there might be a considerable amount this year and this year might be the last year of that considerable amount. Uh, and, and my other question is, okay, so the vehicles, so what happens, the traditionally vehicles have been funded, you know, so what happens if that all flew? We, do we have, uh, the finances to, to buy our own? I mean, it's, it's like we're at their mercy to replace vehicles. So would they, if that funding doesn't come out, you know, what are, what are we gonna do to replace it?
So that's, that's part of the plan that we're working on, um, and what we, what you saw in the preliminary budget for the road department to replace the trucks that, um, have been neglected over the course of the years, um, we don't wanna be in that position again where we can't fund our own vehicle replacements. So, um, you know, there might be a need, um, perhaps this year or maybe next year just to get us caught up, very similar to the maintenance on our buildings that, you know, we've had to go out for months to, to take care of things that have been neglected and badmouthing over the years. Um, I would hope that's our goal. Um, you know, we, the sound man that went this, over this several times is, it, it's our goal to be able to replace our vehicles in-house and not be putting them on here. And the, this is an opportunity for you to do projects, um, other than things that we should be taking care of, um, with our own funds.
To adding, mine is just again, also is in, in, um, economic development and actually that we did put the, the master plan for the open trails, but it's just the amount we need for the study. Okay? So do, is this an opportunity for either we could take to maybe provide some money to actually develop trails or improve the trails that are all already there?
Well, I guess I have a similar reaction, uh, to that one and the Baton Memorial Park one, that I think our applications are going to be more likely to get funded if they're based on a very solid design and planning process. And, uh, to me, it makes sense to ask for that portion first so you could take the result of that portion to ask for the actual construction portion. Uh, that just makes sense to me. And you know, I'm a huge advocate of the, the trail and open space plan and construction. Uh, but the whole reason we wanna plan first is so that we know how best to do the construction and asking for the construction before we have a plan doesn't make sense.
And that's also part of the questions that were asked, is your planning and design phase complete? And you have to say yes or no. If it's not, those are typically not funded until you have your planning and design, um, phase completed.
So my hope would be next year, we would see not the planning money, but some actual construction money.
You know, I tend to agree with, with that if we have a, so where the planning phase comes in, board commissioners is gonna sit down and go go planning, right? It's, we'll, we'll look at it, approve it, do what we need to. It's another sound we're coming from. I mean, and it doesn't make sense to go different phases. Um, so I, I can see that, the, the more solid plan we have, the more likely it may get attention and, and go through it. I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know what you thought about it.
No, but to piggyback on that, he has told me about, I think his name is Castillo, was you and him? And he's been, I just read recently where he, that his group had done a, a, a project.
For the, for golf, uh, yeah, for golf park, right? They had this splash park, uh, idea.
Yeah, so, you know, that in itself would be a solid plan. So I was wondering if we could reach out and see if maybe they would be willing to undertake something for us, which would cost us, you know?
For Baton, you mean?
Yeah, or any other project.
And you know what I haven't reached out to, what that, that hasn't been, uh, that has been something that I need to do.
Well, could we cast somebody from the county to, to at least make initial contact and, and see if we could arrange an agreement?
Possibly, maybe, but you might can deal with, we should, I don't know if you have the numbers and stuff, but we can, we can go with that.
Would that slow down what I heard in passing, you wanted to speed up? I mean, there's already been some planning done at the time, no?
We'll use the counter first. Yeah.
No, but we're moving on because this money here is, there's no guarantee we're gonna get it.
That's true.
Okay? So if we can move on, even if we do get that money, you know, we can still utilize it because we're, again, we're looking at the, the plan for building.
Gee, you know, the other thing that we have to locate it because what, what day did you get time, time manager?
This is due September first, September second, first week of September.
First week of September. Now we're talking about, um, someone that, that is, I guess, teaches, teaches plans and what they do is locate some of these projects as part of their, their lessons, their courses of their, so it might not be a thing that we reach out to him and say, hey, can you have this by September first? Because it, it, he uses this as a teaching tool for his students. So it might not be something that, that gets done and if we fail at that, then we might just fail the whole thing. So we have to be real careful with that, speaking to him and trying to get a timeline as to what, how long it'll take him.
Well, if we contacted him, at least we, we would know possibilities of what, or what. Or if Baton wasn't, uh, the optimum place to use, but their, their capacities, maybe something else would be such as trips, you know, such as something else, you know? But at least we're, we're making contact and saying, hey, there is some possibilities of doing something.
Well, that would certainly be an option probably for projects down the road next year or the year after that. You know, I want, I'd like, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, just, uh, thinking about what Commissioner Solis said, I, I too am frustrated by how much money the university got and I, um, not that they got a bunch of money, it's just that, and I guess my question is, hey, how do they do that? Uh, cause I saw the twelve hundred dollars for the, for a lot of changes too. And so, um...
It's twelve hundred thousand dollars.
What's that?
Which is twelve hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. One point two million dollars, yeah, for door locks. It's, it's hard to think of that, the volume of money for door locks.
You know what? There is a, I guess, an explanation for why it's so much. These are electronically controlled from a central location and they can go into lockdown, uh, in the case of a need to go into lockdown central. The idea is pretty impressive and that, that helps me understand why it was so much.
Okay, I knew it was something, they're special about.
They're special.
And they submitted over eleven million dollars on projects.
Eleven, they submitted, yeah, I understand that. Uh, so it was over eleven million dollars in projects, yeah. So do they have lobbyists? Or are they their own lobbyists? Do they need lobbyists?
They're their own lobbyists.
Sure, they're their own lobbyists.
Well, and I think they've employed one too, but.
Have they now?
I believe so.
I, I think he's, yeah, I've just got a lot of questions around that. How, how do we, how do we, uh, we see what they did? How do we get more money?
Well, I, I figure it would be really inherent for us, uh, for us to do some of the lobbying. So, you know, maybe we need to have, get well versed in some area and, and go to Santa Fe and lobby somewhere because there, there's also federal monies that, that are available. Uh, Mr. Pla, Chairman Portman, I just met with a, a couple of our, our representatives from our, our federal senators and there's possibilities there, you know, and that we need to, to explore.
You know, it, it seems to me we would benefit, and I certainly include myself, from an understanding of the different pools of money available in Santa Fe and what we would get out of additional lobbying resources. Uh, I don't know, uh, if Mr. Moore would be the right choice, but if we had someone, I believe it's Bob Moore who lobbies for NMC, uh, for counties, uh, with Steve, Steve Coppin, we also know Brian, Brian Moore.
They don't typically lobby for.
Specifically for Grand County, but I'm not looking for that person. I'm looking for somebody who knows the process to come and make a presentation to us. And so that's why he occurred to me.
I'm sure we can get Brian to go in and make that presentation on the legislative lobbying. I know he's made it several times to the commissioner's affiliate, but I'm sure he'd be, he'd not forget.
Well, that might benefit us, uh, because I think, you know, we have an image that perhaps there's money out there we're not tapping into and I'm not sure that's true because I think counties fall into different categories and as you say, that, you know, every administration changes what it wants to see with how the capital outlay is, is a portion. Uh, and if I'm correct in my understanding of it, which I'm not that confident about, uh, our representatives and senators are assigned a chunk of money. And that's basically, well, we can lobby all we want, that chunk of money is not gonna change. Uh, and, and so if I'm right about that, then it wouldn't make any sense for us to, to hire a lobbyist.
See, now, my understanding is they're assigned a chunk of money and that's, that's at their discretion.
Yeah, exactly.
And when you go through ICIP process, that money's not included in this. That's a separate pot of money that they're gonna use for the capital improvements.
But doesn't that even affect their discretion? Does that have to be included by the government? Anyone?
Not that I understand that.
I think it does, yes, technically, but the governor's not gonna mess with the process, right? They've got this one-third, one-third, one-third agreement and as far as I know, the governor's not gonna touch the legislators' portions of that because that would then impinge on her ability to do what she wants with her portion of the money. So that's your understanding as well.
I would be correct with that.
Yeah, so, okay, think for example, the tour of the Hila, that money, how was that taken up?
You're gonna need someone to come who has the backstory to that one.
Well, you see, this is what I mean, not, not just because they have money, it's not always guaranteed.
Yeah.
Well, nonprofits have to have a government entity make that request that they have, supposed to. Sometimes, uh, things get funded in mysterious ways. Believe it or not.
Yeah, I think you're right that there can be exceptional cases of politicking.
There you go.
But that, that's working with our legislators. Uh, I think that we don't need to pay lobbyists to do that. The five of us should be on top of that.
I think we need to spend more time over this, these next ten years than, than what we did this year.
No, no, that, that's what I mean. And, and just like, uh, Commissioner Ball says, there might be pools of money that we don't know about. I, I know that when I was going up for the school, if you go to a, a committee meeting, uh, where somebody might come up, and if you're sitting there, you might be the lucky one that gets it. So this is part of our educational process and we need to know more about it and be more proactive and highly approachable.
Mr. Chair, board members, if I may, I remember with the, um, with Brian Moore yesterday, uh, we were at the Economic Development and Treasure Policy Committee and, uh, we actually speak with three of the, uh, cabinets, uh, secretary cabinets of, uh, border force, uh, tourism and also, uh, economics. He did not mention very much about, uh, this legislative session on monies. He was very short on what he was gonna discuss about where the monies are at, but, uh, I just sent him a, a small text to see exactly where we could be, you know, placed on where the monies are at. But, uh, thanks to Charlie, he sent me an email on too, there's gonna be a pool of funding, so I'm working on it at this moment. But, uh, he was very short yesterday when we spoke about, uh, legislative session for being a short session. And, uh, the minute I come up with the email for me, I'm gonna get it on over to Charlie and then we'll, we'll go from there. But I did talk to him yesterday.
So, um, back to this, would, um, because we have a couple more meetings to finalize this, um, I would like to ask if you would consider perhaps taking this list and prioritizing it very similar to what you've done with, for these applicants of what your top projects are and get those back to Nisha and we can take a look at it and we can bring you back a list based on your feedback, um, as, as what, you know, each of your top priorities are of, of, of what's on here. This is just a throw together list for you to take a look at and you determine, um, what, what you want to see, um, in those, particularly those top five, um, projects. Is that something you would be willing to consider? Um, we've gotta have some sort of feedback, um, so that we can get something back to you to look at that we can, you know, decide, you know, so this is actually a drug work.
I think that'd be a good plan if we don't reprioritize these and jeopardize our funding because of some, because I've heard about the strategy that you guys have followed in the past. Um, I think obviously that the object is to get more funding and not less, so.
And I think that would, to probably, before we did that, it is, is probably have a little bit more discussion on this. So we could, uh, you know, the commissioner, Ed, who isn't here today, have a little bit more discussions to how she feels a public discussion before we rank them. Because, um, I mean, there's, there's some good points out there that we may be messy. Uh, and we can understand at least each commissioner, what their ideas are before we rank them.
We can discuss this again on Thursday. It's an agenda item and that would possibly provide what you're looking for.
Right. And I think Commissioner, we're gonna be here and we're gonna hear her, hear her also to what, what she thinks is her priorities.
And some of these you can see, I mean, and you know what they are, but there's other things that, that you don't know. Uh, I'm gonna take, uh, corporate economy, uh, a million dollars, but I, I don't know if that's for. So maybe a little bit of a... So maybe a little bit of a scripter on what it is, you know. Some, like I said, some of them are really self-explanatory, but some of them aren't. Like Economic Development Tech Ed, that's $1 million, but what is that?
So, Mr. Chair, my commissioners, that's contained in the detail and we can send you the entire plan with the detail that gives a little more explanation of what these projects are, just for a quick answer to the Fort Bear. That's just to support the Santa Clara Plan by having it on our ICIP. It gives, whenever they do go for funding, they can see that that item is on various, there's all these county plans, that there is community, county-like support for projects. It's not that we necessarily would be going after funding, it's just a matter of project support. That includes a lot of the news as well. If they could show that other governmental entities are recognizing the need for a reform project, that be the example of that. But we'll send you, Misha will send you the entire draft that he has, that's got more of the detail.
Okay.
Didn't you, were we quite large, because each project has four pages of detail?
Well, maybe even a summary. You know, I, I just, if I'm going to prioritize, you know, we have CDBG Project Administration Facility, $700,000, Planning Grant Administration Facility facility, but looking at this, I don't know what they're all about. So maybe it's something that's really important and I don't really know on my list because I don't know what it is.
So, Mr. Chair, my commissioners, CDBG has to be included on your ICIP plan to gain the maximum amount of points. Those projects aren't identified until you get into the process and you start having your public hearings, which we recently had. So those are basically placeholders, because we have to have it on our plan, although we probably have not identified. The CDBG Planning Grant, we can utilize that for trails and open spaces planning. That's the reason that is on there. But the CDBG Grant, that's just a placeholder so that it's on there and we don't have to come back in on our ICIP in the event that we have another project that comes up. So some of these are just simple placeholders and you see that's going to be.
That's about four pages to say that, right?
No, but it's, you'll, you'll see exactly how complicated all of this is when you start. You need to submit these things and, and the rationale and the, you know, what you have to have. So this is simply the summary. Misha will send you the entire, entire plan so you can take a look at it and that should help you gain a better understanding of how all of this works. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, just reach out to either of us.
While we're having this discussion, can you tell me what, oh, it just disappeared. Economic Development Tech Ed Facilities, for the $1 million for 2021?
Was it about the technical, educational, vocational place, school?
Yes, the chairman, the commissioner, and this is something that is, again, in support of schools. Silver Schools, Curtis Club has asked us to have something on our ICIP that shows, again, more support than just them having it on there.
Okay, guys, thanks.
Any further discussion on this?
I still want to reject and request for a proposal, RFPs, item O4, reject RFP 1906 of Attorney and Legal Services, is that right?
Senior Patrick, you do have an email from me regarding the RFP for Attorney and Legal Services. We did advertise on June 10th for this RFP for these services. It was advertised in Silver City Daily Press, the Los Priscys Times, and the Alquity Journal. We did require that they submit a mandatory notice of intent to propose. I did get five responses during the course of the solicitation. Two, two firms rescinded their notice of intent to propose and one did not submit at all. So we did have two proposals for two firms, one out of Los Priscys, New Mexico, Holt and Martin and Martinez, and one out of Rio Rancho, Brown and Off Firm. The Evaluation Committee can be moved on July 17th. Initially, they scored the proposal based off of the criteria set in the RFP. I can go over that with you if you guys are interested in. And we met together collectively, scored them. Based off of these scores, Holt and Martin and Martinez came up with 973 points and the Brown and Off Firm came up with 856. So this is our recommendation to award to Holt and Martin and Martinez about this.
And what we would be doing is asking you to negotiate a contract with them, which then later we would approve, correct?
Correct.
So it's not exactly an award yet.
Right. At this point, it's just a recommend, the committee is making a recommendation to award. Once you make the recommendation, then we begin contract negotiations.
So I would be interested in hearing about the criteria, if, if the rest of the commissioners are okay with that.
Yeah, because I, I want to know, you know, if we're comparing apples to apples here. And, and also, I, I know, I don't know how privileged the amount of information is. So what was the dollar amount? Was it a per hour or was it a fixed contract, that sort of stuff?
So at, at this point, the proposals are considered confidential just because if an award has not been made. Once an award has been made, then all of that becomes public work that can be available for reviewing. I can be happy to discuss this with you prior to, to those being made. But we can only discuss the contents of the proposals until an award is, is made. But I can go over the criteria that the Evaluation Committee reviewed the proposal on and the points based off of it, if you would like.
Yes.
So we had desirable specifications that the firms or individuals needed to, to let us know of their capacity to, to serve us. There was experience with contract law, experience with employment law, procurement law, tort litigation, experience with land use and property law, experience with creation and enforcement of local ordinances. They also had to give us other experience within the Mexico Public Body, as well as providing grievances. They had to show us continued education for their attorneys on staff. They also had to propose cautious limits. The cautious limits is a little bit vague because you, you may not get a true accurate picture basically because it's hourly based, of, of our needs. They also had to do essential service responsibilities, which we required accessibility 24/7 in the event that we needed to call them in the middle of the night for whatever reasons. They had to be accessible for us, document preparation and review, to review any documents that we needed to submit to them or if they needed to prepare any documents, whether it was a resolution, or ordinances, or things of that nature. And confidentiality and record retention. The county will own all of the records, but they do have to retain records for the open, the record retention requirements as well. And I did contact Holt and Martinez, they did list the local county as their reference. I contacted the county manager this morning and she gave them a, a fully review.
And I guess one of the things that I wanted was accessibility. You know, but actually, we enjoyed being able to walk into an office and ask a question. So I would certainly want to be able to give somebody a call if I had a burning question.
And, and both firms may have made available a proposal that they were giving to the county 24/7.
What were they meaning by the county? By the, by accessible to the county commissioner? Are they just, you know, certain individuals? Because I think the board of commissioners needs to have access to them.
At that point, I think you would mean the board's decision, who has accessibility to the attorneys and whether you prefer a routing process. Because at this point, it, it could get costly if anybody is going, these sometimes we do put in proposals, how they're going to appeal you, six million increments, you know, it could get costly, but that's, that's a decision for the board when it comes time for the contract.
You know, and I think the other thing is being physically responsible that, that we need to look at is, is, you know, the salary that, the costs that would have to have an in-house attorney compared to a, a contract attorney too. I mean, I want to be physically responsible in doing that because sometimes we've got a lot of questions, so. You know, and I guess one of the questions is, the board of commissioners, can we say, we just want a six-month contract, it's the hour for for now? Or are we locked into a year? What, what are we going to be locking into?
The proposal was advertised for a year contract with a maximum of four-year renewals. Of course, that's a second contract. My recommendation is if we move forward with an award, to have a year contract. Of course, you have your, your termination clause in there that you can terminate 20 days, 60 days, 90 days. But of course, that also comes with the negotiation process from the firm and they're even willing to entertain a six-month contract. I would have to look a little bit deeper as far as for firm goes, based off of voting to advertise as a year contract. But one of my recommendations is to stick with the year contract, but also have termination laws in there that you can pull back on.
Okay, because I would really like to see that the, the board of commissioners, that all five commissioners have some input in that contract before they get some. Don't ask us to vote, it's to what, what your wishes are, vote with us now. Termination, if we terminate, what is it going to cost us if there is a price attached to it? Because, you know, definitely, I guess we can say we're spoiled with that. I mean, you, you walk into an office and it was, you don't like to clock in and then they want the price, you know. But if they want the hourly wage or whatever, or we call or she called us. So I, I think we need to really look at that or, or at least have some discussion on it.
Mr. Chair, my commissioners, I would remind you that New Mexico counties has a full legal team, in-house legal team, under Grace Phillips' leadership. They have a team of, I believe, is three attorneys, plus Patrick Chigio, who is, I mean, Mike and I can pick up the phone and ask him general related questions and get immediate response. So I would remind you that you do have that resource that is available to you as well. I know some of you have had, picked up the phone and then spoke with Grace and she's happy to provide some advice in addition to a contract attorney. So just wanted to remind you, we do have that deal.
And I don't have a problem with that, it's just that, you know, the attorney, the attorney, the board was in the past, we reported to the county commissioners. And those are the questions that we have, you know, who's going to control, you know, some of these costs? Who's going to do this? Because I think they need to stay that way, that's my opinion. And, and we need to look down the road as to what's going to be more physically responsible as it's continue going in-house or continue to incur charges for questions.
Right, and, and my understanding is, is the route that we went for, for this process was to, to contract with a firm, past, past, past attorneys. They involved four of them, four of them, which, which reported to, to the board as a contractor. There, there is some direction involved with, with the tasks that are going to be given, but we, we don't, we can't have that direct oversight over them. They will give us recommendations as to, as to how the county wants to proceed. But as far as direct oversight, as far as a contractor goes for an RFP, that's a little bit, it's a little bit different from versus an in-house employee.
Problem is, because of, Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. So are they currently working for a lobbyist?
Yes, they're, they're.
And I'd like to know what managers, what have asked to say, anything about recommendation, information relative to when we have an in-house attorney, now we're talking about going contract. Frozen cons or should we go contract? What's your recommendation?
As I say, I was on the Evaluation Committee, that would be my recommendation at this point. I believe you've had a conversation with me and it pleased me on my frozen cons, I've had both. There's frozen cons to in-house, there's frozen cons to a firm. If I have more experience with a firm, I am like you, I enjoyed the availability of that. But it's a try of the board's decision how you choose to go forward and how you choose to oversee this contract.
I've had, I've never had any experience with this firm, I never heard of it until today, but I have had experience with firms who, a firm who regularly works for several counties. And they really know their, their stuff. If you, all the attorneys aren't going to be, if all the in-house attorneys aren't going to be versed on governmental law and so many go to, these guys are specialized, I'm assuming that whole law firm is specialized and they know their stuff. So when you're paying someone X dollars an, an hour and they don't know the answer, that's pretty expensive, even though you, you have to pay somebody maybe two or three times that. Who knows the answer instantly without having to go do literature research, so. That being said, I'm just, I'm still unsure, but with that, your manager's recommendation, I'd be.
I would say it's my recommendation, it's, it's your decision. You know, it's, it's, there's been enough discussion that, you know, it's just going to be your decision on the stat, what was carried out and what was cut. And, and or with whatever decision it is that you need to make.
Okay.
So I felt, feel like we've already made the decision to go with the contract firm. It's surprising to me that we're still thinking about that, is that, you know, a real question also?
I haven't worked that.
Okay, yeah. And I'm also concerned with a one-year period, I understand the idea of six months. I think one year is a reasonable amount of time to, to try it out. And I think we've also discussed, I know I've expressed my concern about the potential costs of any of us feeling like we can pick up the phone and call reasonably expensive attorneys on county time. Just an idea, you know, we can all think about how this might work or not work, is every commissioner having sort of a quota that you don't get to access that service more than X amount in a year or in a month, or however you want to set it up. Just to contemplate, because I do think we're going to have to have some self-regulation.
I agree. And I think so, and I agree with that, the thing is that what county, sometimes when we have an in-house attorney, this is, they're keeping a pulse on some things that happen within the county that are happening and they keep a pulse and they're seeing certain things, they're, they're seeing things that might hit us, approach us, because they're in-house, they see a lot of the personnel stuff going on too that they can inform themselves. And, and that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking at is, is the benefits of having an in-house attorney and having maybe the expertise to sit back and maybe prevent some of this stuff and whatnot. So, but you want, your problem is just that, for the surgeon and the board.
I have one question though. You award the contract, but then you can go into negotiations, right?
That's correct.
The negotiations can be on particular items, such as, you know, contact by the commission.
I don't know if, if the, the form of contact will be maybe listed in, in the contract. That may be an internal procedures that the county, county management develops as far as with this firm, what's going to be a routing process, if you're going to have a routing process. I'm getting definitely included in, in dealing with the, the contract if, if that's the wishes of the commission. But I'm not sure that, that's appropriate for a contract as far as point of contact that could be maybe sort of certain matters, but maybe it's more of a procedural item. But once the contract is in place, who's going to be.
Well, the reason I'm saying this is because in other contracts that I've had with an attorney, you, you get an indefinite amount of cost, as long as there's no actual research or going on that's just based off their knowledge. You know, I have a question on procedure right here and they tell me what that is. You know, they don't have to research it, they just give you the answer. So, and those are unlimited. So that's why I'm saying, if we're going to be going into the negotiation phase, well, then that can be part of the negotiation.
I agree and also agree with Commissioner Brown. I think we can self-regulate, we can call Grace at New Mexico Counties first. And that team, if we can't get our answer there, then we could go on. You know, if one commissioner spends an inordinate amount of time, he needs to be ran in.
No, man, I agree with that running in, but I don't think that any one commissioner has gone to, when we have in-house attorneys. gone to, when we have in-house attorney, but you know, I think they went in there with legitimate concerns and trying to keep either of the board out of trouble or keeping themselves out of trouble. And I know that she's done that a few times with some of the stuff. And I don't want it limited to any county commissioner having access to those attorneys. Now, I mean, if it's for things that you can look up yourself that are, I can see that, I can see calling Grace and that, but there's some things that I don't think, what I want to put is a little bit of heat. Commissioners saw that she only had three calls this year or that. I mean, yeah, we have monitored and looked at it. Half the time, you know, you go in there, talk to Abby, I don't know how many times you walked in there. Is it my right to know? No. Is it going to be my right to know how many times you called this attorney? You know, how do we write in something like that? You know, am I going to go or is Commissioner Brown going to come and ask permission? Hey, can they call it? No. That's not what we should be doing. I think that half these questions that the commissioners have are legitimate questions and, you know, reliability at the end. It's possibly saving money for a minister or getting into any trouble. The monitoring part, we're going to foot, sign up sheets and say, hey, Commissioner Brown, we called the attorney, sign the sheet and say why? I don't think they're going to be a little difficult to do sometimes.
I don't think that's as outrageous as, I think you're presenting it as. And the analogy of mine is travel. I don't just decide I'm going to go to a conference and then build a county for my travel expenses, right?
Right.
I go to Charlene and I say, is this an appropriate use of county travel funds for me to attend a conference? I don't know why we couldn't have a similar process. And you phrased it, asking permission. I guess that's kind of what it is. It's, and I don't know that we need to go there yet. I'm happy to see how it plays out.
Plays out.
But I wouldn't consider it to be some radical infringement on our rights as commissioners to have to ask permission. I can envision that being a possible remedy if it turns out to be a problem.
Hopefully it won't happen.
I agree.
I don't see where.
Hopefully it won't.
I can just see the chairman though, having to necessitate a bunch of questions for that.
And that's a good point. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, board member, how about elected officials? We deal with protest boards and the property tax division, they have their attorney and we always have an attorney sit in on our protest board. And the last one that actually went on, it lasted over six hours. So do we go to the New Mexico counties, Dr. Grace? We'll have to define what we need to do also because we're approaching our protest hearings possibly in September or October. So that's just a question I would just like to ask.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns as far as the cost. I mean, once they sit in the hearing, it doesn't stop there.
But not only that, preparation for the hearings also.
Preparation and hearing new information and doing research and, you know, there's a whole thing, you know, even a phone call, it's not just a phone call. I was with the security for fifteen minutes. It's a research that they have to do, the case, a lot of things studied, past practices, they look at it, you know, and that's what's a little scary to me is the physical end of it, is the cost at the end.
Yeah.
And, but you know, I mean, that's going to be for discussion. But there's a lot more to this than just the simple phone call. It's all get back with you, have to research it, you're in a hearing, they have to, you know, research it. So then paperwork, so those costs are, I'm going to tell you right now, I have a feeling in a year we're going to spend over a hundred thousand dollars each. That's the way I'm looking at it. But, you know, we can, we can, if it's the wishes of the board down, you know, thirty to whatever, to vote for it and try it, that's fine. We'll look at it and see the cost, but, you know, we'll go with it.
Any other comments or discussions?
I don't know if you want to address the assessor's question in other counties. Did the county manager regulate the elected official's use of that?
In my experience in the past with contract attorney, I was responsible for the oversight of that contract. I never had an issue with county commissioners having, well, they, that's how they was a contract attorney and they were very cognizant of the time they're dealing. And a lot of times would get their questions through me or through the association of counties. But part of the RFP and part of what a contract attorney does is they represent everyone, the county commission, every elected official, whether they're available, if they're for a protest hearing or has a question or has a proposed ordinance you're looking at or something, they represent me, you, the sheriff, the assessor, if me to ask questions, detention, they're a contractor for the entire county. You know, every, every situation is different and like I stated earlier, however you choose to go forward is how we negotiate this contract and do our best to that.
As far as our internal accounting process, would you bill different departments for their use of the attorneys?
Oh, no, sir.
You'd put it all in one department?
That contract will be standing on the county's budget or that's the industry that put the money, if you choose to award this. And it's just managed that, you know, that is, wherever you choose to budget, what you anticipate, those fees being.
Again, I would certainly hope this never comes to be a problem, but it wouldn't be impossible to bill my department based on their billing to us, right? Because they retort to us what they're working on.
Right. Now, that would not be possible to do because you did a detailed bill for everything that they do, down to whatever improvement they've done, whether it's typically success or difference.
Okay. So that's another thing that during the year I'd like to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. Moving on to how the county healthcare claims board is PMQ for. These are items that I had tabled from the last meeting, the reason why I tabled, I just wanted to make sure of that. D C code, those happen for it, but I think they're before you to get them.
And they're very small.
Do you want to go over the detail of how many claims and what they report or the ambulance or also?
Okay, there was one regional medical claim, amount of two thousand two sixty-six twenty-five. We did not have no ambulance claims for the main. We had the one that we are now recommending, it is a protest due one claim for two thousand two sixty-six twenty-five, and that is for your main claims. And go on to your June. On the June claim, we had two regional medical center claims for five hundred and fifty-five sixty-four. That was presented for a regional medical and we are requesting that the commission approves the June claims, one regional medical claim in the amount of five hundred and fifty-four and again, there was no ambulance claims.
Any special comments?
And with Commissioner Brown's like, the size of those. It's certainly better than all we've got.
I would contribute that to a lot of the expansion of services at the detention center. So you know, we're paying it one way or paying it the other and they've done a lot of their job of handling things in-house instead of just automatically shipping it to a hospital which has seen a lot of costs. So I contribute a lot of that to my work with our contract.
Well, it's, I don't want to think in my mind that this is a new pattern, but if it is, that's significant.
And we're also vetting each claim and making sure that we're being billed properly in a proper timeframe rather than just working approval of claims that's a bit.
Right, right.
So there's no further questions? You deal with all the executive decisions scheduled, person hours, Mr. Chairman, commissioners that can do it, right?
So moving on, Commissioner reports or Commissioner Sullivan's hearing report?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Not enough for today necessarily, but I'd like to explore and I'll be, I guess I'll ask a few questions to management and firm dad about how our meeting schedule is working for them, maybe the commissioners want to wait in on it. My wife reminded me the other day, work expands to time allotted and I wonder if we've allotted more time. Now our work is expanded and we're taking more time than we usually. But I just, I'm not sure. Yes, four meetings above seems a lot, if we're on the right track, I'm good for that. That's still what I have. Just please be thinking about that, what your answers to that.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to let public and my fellow commissioners know that tomorrow afternoon and evening, the New Mexico Mining and Minerals Division will be holding a hearing in this room about the, what are called the closeout plans for Chino and Tyro Mines. And I've seen quite a bit of activity on Facebook about this, quite a bit which is misinformed. And so that's why, another reason I wanted to bring it up. Meeting, there will be the open house at four thirty and there will be a formal hearing starting at five thirty. And under the New Mexico Mining Act, the Mining and Minerals Division is charged with approving plans that detail how mines will close, when they do close. These are supposed to happen every five years. In this case, I believe it's been thirteen or fourteen years. It's been a long postpone. It has nothing to do with whether the mines should close. That's the primary misinformation that's out there. Everybody knows the mines eventually will close. So it has everything to do with that fact and with preparing properly for that eventuality. One person who will be testifying at that hearing is a gentleman named Jim Kipers. Mr. Trujillo mentioned him during our February commission meeting. He is, I think, the foremost expert in the nation on the question of financial assurance for mines. And this is an issue that's particularly important to me because I do not like to see taxpayers subsidizing large corporate operations. I think that's a misuse of taxpayer money. And one way to avoid that happening is to have adequate financial assurance in place. What it means is when a mine closes down, they are responsible for funding the costs related to that closure. If a mine closes down in a situation of bankruptcy, a bankruptcy court can find that they're not responsible, that they can't possibly pay, that other creditors come first. And the way to avoid that is to have in place financial instruments that can be called on to cover those costs. So that's a major part of these closeout plans. And if you want to learn more about it, I'd encourage you to come, listen to both Mr. Kipers and to the mines experts that they'll have at the meeting tomorrow. This relates, you may recall, we voted on whether the county recommended approval or not by the legislature of HP two fifty-five. This relates to that. So if you wanted a more background about why I supported HP two fifty-five, again, you can come in and hear about that. So that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one thing that I just want to bring up, well, there's a couple of them, but other commissioners reports, you know, during this Fourth of July, I did, and I'm sure most of you that a lot of emails concerning fireworks and the noise. And it's probably something that as a board of commissioners, we need to start thinking about. You know, some of those emails from our veterans and, you know, what they've gone through and what is actually the purpose for the celebration? Should it just be a community function or they have it amongst because of, you know, what our veterans have to go through in hearing the loud popping? And the other part of it too is the animals that it does affect. I know that, you know, fireworks going a week before and a week after the Fourth of July, we had one instance for a port, I was working on a marking dock, I was afraid that was hiding under a porch because of the fireworks. So just food for thought is something that we might think about and we have time to think about when this next Fourth of July approaches us as to what we really need to look at and what do we need to, what action, if any, do we have to take or who should consider taking? You know, nine o'clock fireworks are a lot, are really restricted by our fire and no stairs to whether they go on or not, they're just food for thought. Because those emails are very, very interesting and I know that it affected animals a lot and my fault, but sometimes I never even thought about what the effect it does have on our veterans. And it does affect them also, so something we have to work on. You know, the other part to this is thinking about what we had forgotten and going over some of my notes is, is just food for thought also that the Bay Area Library had requested a budget for eight thousand dollars to assist them. And who brought that up is the presentation we have from another state, you know, because it is, I mean, that's a lot of our foundation when we talk about economic development, trying to prepare people for economic development, it's part of the foundation. I think we go hand in hand with that, with supporting our libraries. And I know that a lot of people think it's down onto the internet, it's down onto the electronic devices, but we do still have people that, that, I mean, use our libraries and kids and have different programs. So I'd really like to, for our commissioners to really think of revisiting that, that part of it. I know we always hear that for some things, we always hear we don't have money and all of a sudden money appears for certain projects. You know, I don't like that, but you know, some projects that are zero, but we need to look at that. You know, the one, and I'm going to say it again, and if I take a video of it, that I can live that too. You know, we can give twenty-five thousand dollars to a dockport so that you can approve your dock soon. I don't see why we can't give eight thousand dollars to a library. You know, I know the discussion was brought up about Silver City Library, you know, those man, I think as far as I know, I'm aware they did not request any money. So I think if they do, we can visit that at that time before right now, you know, where it has. And that's something that I definitely need to really look at and really consider because it does help a lot of our kids. And, you know, I do take my hat off to Mary Beth and all the tutors to what they're trying to do. And I strongly believe in that program and strongly believe in what they're trying to do with, with getting people G Ds to move their time forward. As far as your reports, I'm sure I forgot something else, but I have three, so I can do that.
That's right. Thank you. I did forget one thing. I, you know, we're going to be meeting on the budget and approving the last, the final budget. So I, I would really like to see if we can give some kind of a raise to our county employees. And I'm talking to the already employees. I would also see if we did give a raise, what implications that would have on the insurance department that have the new structure. So if for the next meeting, we could find that out. And my idea of a raise is giving, you know, like the same amount across the board. So not a percentage, you know, but the same amount across the board and what would that cost us to say in twenty-five percent, twenty-five cent increments or, you know, and so that we could really look and see can we do this and how much can we do? And on what to mirror, what you said on the dockport, you know, could we reallocate that money somewhere where it would benefit us better? For a library, roll that money into maybe providing a raise. So I just, food for thought, so you can think about it until, you know, we're on Thursday. That's it.
You know? I want to change the motion?
Second.
I'll move. I think we have to. I think this is not, I'll lose in favor.